Good evening. Welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for September 9th, 2019. Can I have a motion in executive session for the matters pertaining to the employment issue of particular individuals and contractual negotiations? All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. Have a motion to go back into public session?
I will second.
All those in favor? And the opposed? Good evening. Welcome to the Yorktown School District's Board of Education meeting for September 9th, 2009. Can please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for those in our community and our troops.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, with respect, no nation, without any other. This is my pledge.
We are going to start with public comment. Anybody wishing to speak on agenda-related items? All right, we're going to write to the superintendent's report then.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome back to our first full week with the students. We're delighted to welcome back our students. I am going to just transition over to the podium so that I can give our opening of school report. We had a terrific opening of school. Of course, not without the typical growing pains of just making sure everyone knows where they're supposed to be and when they're supposed to be there, but that we're already seeing those scheduling issues resolve themselves. Our 2020 vision is what guides all that we do here in the school district. Our work at East Team is quite powerful and quite valuable. I'm going to advance this slide of our work. Here were those opening of school glitches I just mentioned. Here's one of them. All right, so let's go back to the beginning. So our 2020 vision is what guides our work here in the Yorktown School District. We support this vision. We live this vision. It's evident in teaching and learning throughout our school district. It's something that we're very proud of. There are two prongs to the vision that I focused on during my opening day presentation with our faculty and staff, and they're instructional and inspirational. And I'd like, just want to touch quickly on each of those. And I'd like to share with you a couple of videos that I'd like to share with the community, some videos that I shared with our faculty and staff at our opening day session. And I thank you for those who either were in attendance or who viewed the presentation subsequent to opening day. With regard to the instructional prong of our vision, East Team is what guides the work that we do. We're doing such wonderful things in the area of East Team. We're so proud of our work in East Team. We view literature and social studies as a foundation. I know there's a lot of text on the slide. I'll just briefly speak to some of the bullet points in that slide and then certainly those in the audience and at home are able to view the slide in more detail at their own pace. We're really proud of the work in empathy and character education that we've cultivated in our school district. We're most proud of that. We're very proud of the new engineering program that we've introduced in the district, our new engineering lab, our new robotics lab, app development courses, new mathematics resource for elementary schools. We will continue some of the wonderful science programs that we've begun, including a new junior science research program to really create a feeder program to our very prestigious Yorktown High School Science Research Program. We've infused drone technology and hydroponics into our class where you can grow vegetables and crops almost on demand, which is a really, really exciting technology that we're introducing into the district. We spoke about it last year at opening day, and that spring, we had four teachers apply for grants from our foundation, which is absolutely wonderful that our teachers are embracing the latest technology. East Team is an approach. It's our educational philosophy. It's not one more thing that we do, but it's more who we are and what we do. This school year, we have some pretty lofty goals and some things that we'll be focusing on. And outside of the first bullet, there really is no particular reason for the ordering that I put forth, but number one is we need to keep character education as a priority. As we continue to move into these wonderful STEAM worlds and we continue to offer opportunities in engineering and grow that program and app development, grow that program, and look at some other robotics and rocketry and drone technology and all the other wonderful things that our children want to be doing, we can never lose sight of our character education program. We can never lose sight of the importance of building empathy in our students. So we're going to continue to work on our curriculum across the board. We're going to continue to find opportunities to integrate our work in East Team. That's important to us, that it's integrated into what we do, not an extra thing that we do. It's a part of our identity. In fact, November 8th, we have 30 administrators and educators from the region coming to visit our school district to learn a little bit more about East Team because it's something that is so intriguing to our neighbors. And we'll continue to grow coding. We actually have coding going all the way down to kindergarten now, which is absolutely wonderful for our children to experience. I thank Mrs. O'Shea for her leadership in our instructional program. It's been invaluable. Our principals have been absolutely tremendous in supporting the work and implementing the work at the building level, Mrs. Roth, Mrs. Chesser, and certainly our teachers in the classroom. And of course, Mr. Cole for always finding the money to make these things happen. So it's not easy. It's a lot of skill that comes with designing a budget where you're trying to infuse new technologies, new opportunities for students. The other is the inspirational. I challenged our faculty to not only be teachers of content, but also inspire our students, to help them to be better versions of themselves, to be a champion for our students, to never give up on them, and make connections, to help them to find happiness. And this is one of my favorite quotes by John Lennon. I absolutely love this one. Perhaps the greatest inspiration is a video that I came across in my preparation for opening day, and I'd like to share it with you. It's about, it's a story of a gentleman named Clint Pulver. And if you know who Clint Pulver is, great. And if you don't, you will shortly. So I will transition to this slide, and we'll just make sure that the speakers are up so that we can hear the following.
I have a lot of memories from when I was a child. One that's always stuck out to me, though, was when I was about 10 years old and I was in school and I struggled. And I didn't struggle with English, math, or science. I struggle always still. And I would try to listen and focus and process ideas, but I couldn't help myself. Then, to be honest, I would sit there and then I would just start tapping. And the students in the classroom would look at me and they'd say, "Hey, stop tapping." A lot of the time, I didn't even realize I was doing it. And then eventually, when the teachers got after me and they would yell at me and they'd say, "Clint, you have to stop tapping." It got so bad that I got sent to the principal's office for tapping. And he said to me, "Kimmy, when you go back to class, just try sitting on your hands." So I did. I went back to class and when I felt myself starting to tap, I just, I did this. I sat on my hands. And that worked for about five seconds. One time, I was tapping in class and my teacher, Mr. Jensen, looked at me and he yelled. And he said, "Clint, stay after class." And I thought to myself, "This isn't it. I am done." Now, I've always been the type of person who believes that a single moment in time can change a person's life. And this was one of those moments for me that I will never forget. And so I was sitting there with Mr. Jensen and I mean, we clashed. And he walked past me and he said, and he stood next to me, and he said, "Clint, come here. I want to talk to you." And as he looked me right in the eye, he said, "Now, I need you to know something. You're not alone. But I do have just one question that I have to ask you." And he asked, he said, "Have you ever thought about playing with the drums?" And in that moment, Mr. Jensen leaned back and he opened the top drawer of his desk. And he reached in and he pulled out my very first pair of drumsticks. And he held them in his hands and he looked at me and he said, "Hey, Clint, you're not alone. I think you're a drummer." From that moment on, I could never put those sticks down. I tore up a quarter, played drums all over the world. My whole college education was paid for with drumsticks in my hand. Just because of a single moment in time when somebody believed in me and he saw something in me that I didn't see before myself. And from that moment, I learned that there's difference between being the best in the world and being the best for the world.
Clint and Mr. Jensen. I spoke to Clint yesterday on the phone. I called him, actually, he called me, and we spoke and had a great conversation about the inspiration in his life. And I shared with him how I challenged our teachers to be that person in the lives of our students, and he was really inspired by it. So we began the initial discussions of maybe bringing him to Yorktown to speak to our faculty and staff. So we had a really great conversation yesterday. And that's what it comes down to. It's instruction and it's inspiration. It's great if we teach them the content. That's important. That's obviously a countnegotiable. But can we inspire our students to be better versions of themselves? Can we believe in our students and see something in them that maybe they don't see in themselves yet? I think we can, and I think our teachers can do that. With regard to the opening of school, so that was part of our opening day presentation. With regard to the opening of school, we had a wonderful summer. It was a very busy summer. I often ask, I get asked if I had a great summer, and I did. And seeing where we've come with the leadership of our board and this board, I can't thank you enough for the investments that you made in the district and the priorities that you selected for this district. One year ago today, we had air conditioning in a smattering of classrooms. Today, we have air conditioning in just about every homeroom class. There are two classes at the high school that I'm familiar with in our music department that I'm aware of, that we need to attend to, and we have plans for that. And then there are some other large group instructional spaces, but every homeroom class in our district, every elementary homeroom class, middle school, high school, has air conditioning. Now, I appreciate the board seeing the importance in that because when you're six and seven years old and it's a 95-degree day in a hot classroom, it's not the most ideal environment to learn. And our children now have the benefit to be able to learn in an environment where they're comfortable, where their brain receptors can turn on a little bit easier. Engineering lab at the high school, it's gorgeous. It's gorgeous. It's, we're putting the final touches on it. We'll share pictures once we're ready to present it publicly, but it's absolutely gorgeous. New central air system in this building. It's quite comfortable in this room tonight and largely attributable to the upgrades that we had in the district. New corridor floors, ceilings, and lights at Crump Pond School. I'll share with you an image of that so that you can get a firsthand look. The retaining wall at Yorktown High School for our community driving onto our middle school and high school campus, you'll notice that by the administration building, that wall is getting to be erected. That will come, I anticipate it being early October, late September, that will happen. There's so much work and so many design hours that go into the perfect plan because you only get one shot to build it. So we'd rather, obviously, measure twice and build once than measure once and build twice. And that will be erected soon. We have playground enhancements coming to each of our elementary schools, which we're so excited about. Wonderful safety upgrades that we have, some strategic locks and large group spaces that we have, and then new coring of our doors. We're looking at new cameras. We've also done, if you go by the ball fields at Brookside, our in-house crew made Field Three, which was uninhabitable at one point, look like Yankee Stadium. It's absolutely gorgeous, and it was our in-house crew that did that. So as I toured the summer, this is what I saw. This is at Crump Pond. And you look at this and you see this, you say, "Oh, my gosh, we'll never be ready for the start of school." And then you walk into this. And it's just, when you see that first image, you can't help but wonder how the final product would look. And then when you see this beautiful LED lighting in the hallways, energy efficient, nothing but positive responses from our students, our faculty, the community members who've visited the space, just absolutely delighted with the final product. As with a new tradition that we've begun, we've had our open, our second day back, we had John Paul Gonzalez, who is the chaplain for the New York Football Giants, speak to our faculty, and he also spoke to all of our student athletes, their coaches, and our club leaders. They were invited to attend. So obviously, some couldn't attend due to vacation plans, but John Paul Gonzalez's message was so inspiring. That's him interacting with some of the students. You could hear a pin drop with hundreds of high school students, and that is not easily done. He was absolutely wonderful and just such a gifted presenter. We are ironing out, obviously, the transportation, buses getting to the right stops at the right time, and everybody getting to the right places, but we've had just a wonderful, wonderful opening. The students have been really happy to be back in our schools. The buildings look great. One of my favorite pictures is the picture here on the right where there's a new kindergarten student arriving at our district, and she was a little lost. And you can see there are three staff members there, three staff members, who are giving this young lady directions so that, I hope it gives the parents such great comfort to know when they put their children on the bus, they're coming off, and this is the level of support that our children are getting early on in the school year to make sure that they know where they're going. I know I personally held a few hands and wiped a few tears as I walked students into their classes, and it was absolutely wonderful to welcome students to the district for the very first time. We've had a lot of accolades. There were recent rankings that were released. They don't mean too, too much to me, but for some, it matters. We've scored as well as we ever have, better than we ever have. We're doing really, really well. But I think what we know is that our greatest success comes from what our students do, not from any outside acknowledgement, not from any recognition that we'll get from a newspaper or a magazine or any other venue. So I'd like to share with you just one final video before I close of our students. I thank Amanda Burns for all her help in creating this with me. I shared that with our teachers and faculty. I thought it was inspiring. I actually got goosebumps just watching our children. Our school year's off to a terrific beginning, and the theme that we're really looking at, in addition to our all-in theme, is just instruction plus inspiration for our students. So I thank you. I'm happy to take any questions, but I'll take them from my seat if that's okay.
Thank you. So now that we all have tears in our eyes, Anthony, do you have anything?
Yeah, I don't know, very emotional meeting, I gotta tell you. It was inspiring. I loved this, because I can't remember ever being choked up in a meeting. That was well done. I mean, very emotional video, very pretty song. Do you know who wrote that, by the way?
Well, the original version?
Justice whoever will sing the national.
Version.
Yeah, very pretty song, but good start of the year. I'm ready. Nice job.
Rachel?
Yeah, I thought the video was wonderful, as always is. And I think what was evident in the video, too, was all the hard work that, you know, the three of you and our staff in general put in, not just during the school year, but also this summer. The facilities, the curriculum work that goes on, staffing, hiring, it's really, you know, remarkable. So, you know, thank you all for, you know, a great start to the school year.
Sure.
I just wanted to comment on a piece about John Paul Gonzalez. My son was one of the attendees at that session, and he came home, and I remember last year seeing the poker chip on his nightstand. And this year, as I went to quickly clean up the house before the cleaning people come every week, it was just last Thursday, I saw two shark teeth out. And I wanted to, and I asked him about it, and he explained to me the meaning of it. And I just thought that it wasn't only, for the kids who know who were there, that they know that this was part of sort of an outreach, that it's not only you that may need the shark tooth, but someone else, and feel free to, you know, pass it on to someone. So the message got through, and I was sure to put them away so that they weren't lost in the shuffle. So, yeah, it was a really nice day for him, and I'm glad that, you know, so. And the other thing that impressed me was that he changes the topic every year. I think that's important for people to know, that when we hire people to come in, that they do change the topic because we realize that we have the same athletes there year after year for a few years. So that was nice that he got a fresh take on something this year. So, great job.
I had the pleasure of being there both days, and it was incredible. I love seeing staff come back. I think it's my favorite day of the year is when everybody comes back. They're always, everybody comes back with such great hopes, and they're all happy to be back, and you know they only want the best for the students, and it was obvious. I also want to thank our custodial staff, our facility staff. They did a phenomenal job. They always do. We give them a big chore every year. Not only do they have to get the buildings ready and the grounds ready, but they have to put up with construction and do construction, and they always step up to the plate. So we really do need to thank them for everything they've done for that. But it was a great opening day, so thank you.
All right. Anything else? Are we good? All right. We're going to go up to the personnel agenda. I actually have it in here, per. So. Use the one on the computer. Okay. All right. Upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion that the following be approved. We have certified personnel appointments, part-time appointments. We have teaching assistant change in hours, teaching stipends, other compensation, extra duty stipends. We have coaches and co-curriculars. We have a resignation. We have classified personnel. We have civil service appointments, teacher aid change in hours, additions to the substitute list, and a removal from the substitute list. All those in favor? Opposed? All will see. A motion to approve the second reading and adoption of the following policy and regulation. We have 6,700 purchasing and 67 are its regulation. All those in favor? Opposed? Lease amendment resolved on recommendation of the superintendent. The Board of Education authorizes the board president to execute the attached lease amendment number 14 for the Yorktown Athletic Club for additional space effective September 1st, 2019. All those in favor? Opposed? A motion to approve the work authorization for the Phase 2 projects for KSQ Architects to revise the scope of the Phase 2 district-wide projects for 2020. The updated fee for the Phase 2, 2020 projects, has been derived from the pricing in the master agreement and is $254,784. All those in favor? Opposed? A motion to arrange the following special replacements as of September 9th, 2019. All those in favor? Opposed? We are up to board comment. Anthony, you want to start? Again?
All right. Let me take another breath. It's a, you know, really good meeting, you know, which is, I don't want to say surprising that the kids aren't here, so I think good news is everything for me. Just remind yourself, myself, I should say, you know, what I'm doing here. And, you know, I'm crazed about education. You know, I got a little derailed when I was showing it, but this was inspiring. It really was. It gave me a little pick-me-up. So Tom and Lisa and Dr. Hatta, I appreciate it to give me that pick-me-up because it really is so important. I don't care what anyone says, it's so important, education for our kids. And it's proven, it works. The special education works. All our teachers, what you guys, moving forward, the energy you're bringing all the years now, it just, I don't know if anyone sees the district. We see it, moving forward. I see it, the energy and all the new programs and everything, you know, keeping up, you know, we're leaders and the empathy and how nice the district is. So thank you. I'm very happy. So thank you.
Rachel? I think Anthony said it all. I'm good.
I agree. Yeah, welcome back, everyone, to our students, our staff, and our parents. It's good to be back.
Yeah, welcome back. And just a reminder, we have so many things going on. School started, and as you drove on campus, you saw all the sports and everything.
School started and as you drove on campus, you saw all the sports and everything. So just come out and support all our students. Ron, Lisa, Tom?
Open houses are this week, our back-to-school nights, enough of those. Get any night of the week, you can pick it. If there's an athletic event happening, come out, support our students. It's an absolutely wonderful opportunity to engage in the school community. And you don't, you don't have to have students in the high schools to be part of it. We welcome anyone to our athletic events. And thank you, as Jack, you mentioned, to our custodians. They really are behind the scenes. In addition, our office staff, our nurses who worked so hard over the summer, our directors, some of the audience tonight, thank you so much. This doesn't run without you, and we know that. So thank you all so much for everything that you do.
Can I just also add, behind the scenes, I don't know if people realize, over the summer, our teachers conducted over 3,000 curriculum hours where they worked on curriculum. And aside from that, they're emailing me, they're emailing the principals, they're asking curriculum questions, they're asking for resources, they're thinking about their courses and what they're going to teach. They're coming in to set up their classrooms. So our teachers are more invested than I think people might realize in the summer months.
Okay, anybody in the audience for public comment? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All those in favor?
All opposed.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.